Welcome to this evening applying commission. The date is Monday, June 10th. Will everyone please rise for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Mine is Nick Casey, and that's S.I.A.N.A., and the last name, A.S.E.Y.
And what is your address, ma'am?
Six two nine two Chase Wood Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
We had this project done back in 2000. We hired a landscape architect company to do our backyard. And they started with a waterfall. They then put in different features and plantings. And when they got to the gazebo, they realized that it needed to go into the easement. If they didn't, they were going to have to cut down some mature trees. And it wouldn't also permit for a lawnmower or wheelchair to go in. I've got some pictures here. I think I submitted them. It's, if you can kind of see in by this picture here. This one depicts it pretty well.
Mr. Franson will come around and grab those for me.
If you'd like to come over here.
Okay.
Actually, a camera on the ceiling. Looks like we lost the X on the table. So, let's see if we can. And then the cable person will be able to zoom in on this. So you can come around here. You can actually talk into the microphones here.
So this picture, I think, depicts it best. It's pretty narrow.
If you can grab that microphone and talk right into it, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. It's, thank you. It's pretty narrow as you're coming down here. So in order for us to have the lawnmower, there's another picture as well, which probably, to have a lawnmower go through, or a wheelchair, it was very narrow. There we go. As you're going through there, it's pretty much, at this point, any lawnmower or wheelchair, that's the area where it can fit right through. And then the cutting of the trees. Unfortunately, the backyard was pie-shaped. So at that point, it was really the only way to kind of put it in was to go into the easement. So at that time, he applied for us. This was something that the landscape architects, their company came and we all came together. A letter was sent out to our neighbors back then. None of the neighbors were in opposition. In fact, our neighbor right directly next to us came and spoke with the city and said that they were very much in favor. They thought that it was nice. It's nestled within the trees. You can barely kind of, you know, it's not something that's unsightly. They thought that it added very nicely into the landscape. So they approved it. They approved it for five years. At this point, it's lapsed, though, and we're going to be selling our house. So we'd like to request, if possible, if we can grant it permanently so that the new owners, the new owners can enjoy it.
Do you have anything else to add?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything else to add?
I think it's fitting with the landscape. I really think that, I think it really goes in well with the landscape. I think that the unfortunate thing that had it go into the easement was that it's a pie shape because it's a, but no, I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you very much. If we have any further questions, we'll come back to you. Okay? Mr. Franson, will you take us through the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the staff has looked at this and finds that it meets the test for reasonable use, unique circumstances, and character of a locality. And we're okay with the variance as proposed.
Seeing that this is a public meeting, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns about this? So now would be the time to come forward? Okay. Not seeing any commissioners. Do you have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Franson, do you have any history on why the variance was granted for five years initially and not just a permanent variance?
You know, it's, it's, when you read the minutes of the meeting, it talks in general about some commissioners weren't comfortable with granting the variance and some were. And rather than turning it down, they came up with a time limit to have the property owner use it for a certain time period. That's something that is really not allowed by state law to put a timeframe on a variance. A variance has to be permanent, has to run with the property. So when we looked at this, we took the past approval out of the equation, that it was granted for five years, and looked at this from scratch and would it meet the test that we have today as defined in our code and Minnesota statutes.
Which, to my knowledge, has changed since the original.
I would say that it was more difficult to do variances as a result of a court case that happened in Minnetonka where a judge basically said that every city in the state of Minnesota's been applying the statute incorrectly. So with the help of the League of Minnesota Cities and working with the legislature, we got it written so it was easier to follow and also very prescriptive about what you're supposed to look at so that you're looking at a very consistent process with all variance requests.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions at all?
You know, I guess from my standpoint, I have an opinion that, you know, this was something that was granted for five years. It lapsed for, it looks like, almost eight years. You went into this, Ms. Casey, knowing that you had five years and decided to do nothing, whether you forgot or not. Now the house is up for sale. Did you get, can you come forward to the stand, please? Do you mind? Did you get a lien against your property? Is that how this whole thing came up? Or do you have?
No, we haven't had a lien against our property. We've been living in Florida now for four years. We haven't been living, so this is where we come up for the summer.
Right. How did this come about? Did your real estate agent pick this up? Or did another real estate agent pick this up?
No, my husband, my husband was the one that reminded me. He said, you know, have we done anything? My husband, he said, have we done anything about the gazebo? So, and I apologize for that.
Right. So I guess, you know, my point of view is that we had an understanding and agreement, and we had it for five years, and it lapsed, and nobody did anything about it. And here now, your home is for sale, and you want this commission to kind of rectify that. And since you're moving, this doesn't really even affect you necessarily. And my opinion would be that if the new homeowner wanted a gazebo, then they come to this commission again and ask for a variance, and we do it that way. Now, I don't know if any other commissioners feel the same way that I do, but I guess I would hate for stuff like this to continue to happen throughout the city where we, as a commission, kind of make a finding, the city council signs off on it, we move forward, and then, for whatever reason, we come back and people don't honor those agreements that were first made.
Maybe, Mr. Franson, you know, can the house be sold with the variance in the circumstance it is?
It can.
It can?
It can.
Just as a, kind of a counterpoint, my first read, when I read through this, was saying a little frustration of, you know, allowing it to lapse and now coming back. And then I looked at it as it stood and kind of said, well, if it came to us as it stands today, what would we do about it? And to me, it was okay. I mean, it was something that I would approve. So, I don't know. There's, I guess that's just the other side of the, the other side of the argument. If we're going to approve it, why not just get it done with and move forward?
Your points are well taken. I think another point I would make, though, is the point Mike and Mike had made, the point that probably it was not originally allowable that you could set a five-year variance on it. So there is the side that the residents may not have been as proactive in terms of saying, well, okay, let's address this. But at the same time, it may not have been the correct move for the planning commission in the city to have had a five-year variance to begin with. Those, to me, are a little bit self-negating. So I think that's just another point that needs to be raised because it may not have been appropriate in the beginning.
I guess to me, it comes down to principle and commitment. You know, and what did you sign off on? And what did the people sign off on?
Well, I think that's a very fair point.
And say that they would do. And I guess, you know, I would hope that anyone that comes in front of this commission and when the commission makes a decision, that it's upheld. You know, whether it's us or whether it's someone behind us or ahead of us.
You know, in a sense, we had a similar circumstance with the high school scoreboard because they used the baseball scoreboard at 33 feet, which was approved for 30 feet. And they, in some senses, used that as a little bit of a justification for the variance on the high school scoreboard. And I reacted, actually, more so to that than I do to this circumstance.
And this one's even funny where the variance, there is even, I think I read in here someplace that it was set for two foot, and they didn't even follow that. And I was, we're only talking a foot, but nonetheless, we've had, I think we had a building come here that needed a variance for two inches or six inches or something like that, which was kind of silly, but, yes, sir.
My take, if we're going around, is, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's kind of like a punitive position.
Right.
Like to punish. And, you know, really, we just, all we can technically look at is that three-part test. We're not in the, as a commission, we're not the ones that punish people for not following things.
Yep.
So that's just my take on it.
I think this one's, Mr. Franson, this one seems a little bit different only because this doesn't affect, this really doesn't affect the homeowner. If they sell their home, I'm sure they will eventually, you know, usually everyone that comes in for a variance, it's because they plan on being there for a while. And it's because they're going to use it for this, they're going to use it for that. Can this gazebo be moved at all?
That was why we came in the first place is it's, if we were to move it over by a foot, we would have to cut down a couple of mature trees that are probably more in-keeping and harmonious with the landscape. And then we wouldn't allow for having wheelchair accessibility or a lawnmower to get back there. So it would be, people would have to come down steps to get into, to get down into the backyard.
Is there any sense that if this were to remain open, that it would have an impact on valuation at point of sale? I'm not saying large, but...
The value is going to be in the structure of the house and the value of the land.
That's what I would think.
Wouldn't say that any accessory structure that you have on the property would have a material impact one way or the other.
That's what I would think, yeah.
In commercial situations, when the chairman brought up the fact, we looked at like a two-inch or a four-inch variance. In commercial transactions, you have attorneys looking at the property, and they require all the surveys at the time of sale. So they go through that with a fine-tooth comb, and they find any exception, they won't buy the property until it's rectified. So that's why you'll see some of those situations coming in more on commercial office and industrial property. And residential, it's usually not the case. Most people that are buying a lot are looking at what's on the property. They look at the house, does it pass the inspection tests? Can they get the qualifying mortgage to do it? Do they like the neighborhood? Do they like the school district? That's as far as it goes.
Okay. Any other conversation that needs to take place? Thank you, ma'am. You may be seated. Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, move to adopt final order 2013-05.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Congratulations. You can move forward. Thank you. All right, moving right along. The next project is variance number 2013-06. Location is 16396 Wagner Way, and the request is a variance from 226 required parking spaces down to 191 parking spaces. With that being said, with proponent of the project, please come forward. State your name, spell your last name, and your address for us, please.
Hi, I'm Charles Nolan, project architect at Shea. And my address is 2518 University Avenue, Northeast Minneapolis. And my name is, or my spelling is C.H.A.R.L.E.S., last name, N.O.L.A.N.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Woodring. My address is 17848 Bear Path Trail, Eden Prairie. My name is spelled W.O.O.D.R.I.N.G.
Thank you very much. Please tell us a little bit about your project.
Basically, what we're looking for is to expand the existing lower portion of the restaurant into a banquet room, dining room, and also a more family dining area. And also add outdoor seating for dining as well. The first part of the banquet room will consist of approximately, well, exactly 36 seats. The outdoor will consist of additional 20 seats. And it basically comes out to, we are going to be required to have 35 additional parking spots on top of what we already have.
So I'm sorry, can you say that last part again about the 35? I was trying to...
It's going to be, the banquet, and if we max out the seating, according to the code, we'll need an additional 35 parking spots. And right now, as it stands, if we take the retail, all the retail, and maximize the seating count for the restaurant, the size of the parking does not meet the current code, which it was originally established for. So if we, what we're asking for the variance, of course, is to increase the amount of parking. Right now, we don't really have an issue because all the retail shops are closed at five, or the majority of, I think there's three that are open. So we really, and the code doesn't really allow for that. So what we're asking for is the variance.
So if I read this correctly, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost. You're going from 210 down to 191, or minus 19 spaces. Is that correct?
That's how it is written.
So that's why I'm confused in saying you're asking for an additional...
It's probably, it should probably be the other way around. To permit a variance of, from 191 required parking spaces to 226 parking spaces. So there's the 35 additional parking spots.
If they open up that side of the restaurant and do the outdoor seating, they'll need the extra spaces, which they don't have.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, no, it's fine. I was just standing there, and I noticed that it wasn't open over in that side there.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have anything else to add?
I can add from my standpoint.
Sure.
We've been there now approximately six weeks. I don't feel we, and I'll be honest with you, when I initially came in and negotiated and signed the lease, I thought we may have a parking problem, not knowing the mix, the tenant mix in the plaza. Since then, we've been very proactive, or since we've opened, realizing there could be a problem. We've been proactive. We have valet Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, so we manage the parking. We have commitments from Emmanuel Lutheran Church, who allow my employees, which there could be 20, 25 at a time, to park on their premises except for Wednesday nights or Sunday mornings. And I'm surprised Walgreens gave us permission to extend their parking for us, for the valet, on the busy nights. We can park behind their store. And when I say I'm surprised, because typically, a national chain of that prominence, they don't, they don't do that. So we've proactively managed the parking through valet and, and street parking. And to this point, we, I haven't seen any problems. I haven't experienced any, I haven't heard from anybody.
So just to be clear, sir, do you own the lease of the property, or do you own the business itself?
I own the business. I lease the property.
Very good. Okay. Anything else to add to that at all?
The only other part, Chairman, is that we've had plenty of requests for that lower-level seating. And as I explained to a couple of, well, to whomever would listen, that model, we put over a million dollars into remediating and beautifying that space, which is my problem, I understand. And with that model, those additional seats, and there's been a lot of requests from civic organizations, service organizations, all the youth organizations to utilize it, and that was my, my whole meaning or intention before I went in, not knowing that we couldn't, we couldn't see at the lower level. It's for private parties and that sort of thing.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much. We'll let you know if we have any further questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Franson, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this variance meets the three-part test. I think the reason this work is for a couple of reasons. One is, a person in the restaurant business is not going to put in less parking. They're going to put in exactly what they need. If they needed 226 parking spaces or whatever they need for their restaurant, they'd be in here asking and putting those in. The reason this works is you have a large parking field. You have different peak time periods for the different tenants that are in this space. And so I think the parking's going to work just fine. If this was a standalone site on its own property, I'd be a little bit concerned about it because if you do have a problem with the parking, where do you make that up? So the fact that it's in the shopping center operates kind of in the same manner as Applebee's, works in the same manner as the Green Mill. And you realize that we used to have higher parking requirements for general retail, lower parking requirements for restaurants. And we found that general retail didn't ween quite as much, but restaurants need a little bit more. So really, it ends up about the same in most of your retail strip centers. If you have six per thousand overall, you can have one anchor restaurant in there, a couple of more lunchtime activities like the Subway, and the parking's going to work fine. And for all the years that we've had different restaurant combinations in different restaurants out there, we didn't have any complaints from the police department or the fire department or businesses or residents in the area.
Okay. Very good. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anybody out in the audience that has any questions? Not seeing anyone. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, let me just add a data point. I tried to go to the restaurant a week ago Friday, and it was Friday night, prime time. And we pulled in and found a place to park without a problem. And then, in fact, good news for your restaurant, it was a 45-minute wait, so we actually chose to go somewhere else. But when, when it was backed up, 45 minutes, we still found a place to park in a reasonable. So, one data point, not a trend, but one recent data point.
Well, I know there's been a lot of turnover in that particular area, and it's nice to finally see someone, and we, you know, I personally wish you the best of luck of staying there because we're, I'm tired of seeing you turn around all the time. So we hope that you're successful there. Any other comments?
I, I would just say, you know, thanks for taking the time to be proactive, too, in trying to figure out what you can do, too, with valet, working with the church, to be thinking about your neighbors and try and make that a thriving location.
Absolutely. Great comment. Thank you.
And also with this, I'd just add for this variance, because from my understanding, the former tenant was using this space and wasn't necessarily supposed to be using this space based on the parking requirements. So at least they're being proactive on that as well.
Yeah. I like rule followers.
We learned that tonight.
It's a fair point. It's a fair point.
Okay. Anybody, any other comments?
Just one comment. Before we make a motion, do we need to amend the final order for the 226 and 191? I think the way I read it in the final order was the other way that I think you were catching, that it was backwards in its language.
Mr. Franson, you want to comment on that?
Well, actually, the way it's written is the correct way because the city code requirement is 226. They have 191 on the property.
So that is the correct way. We're just reading it wrong. All right. So then, that's good.
The only variance that gets smaller is that you do really think of it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt final order 2013-06.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Wish you good luck in that property.
Lots of luck.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that being said, do we have any planners' reports, Mr. Franson?
I do.
Great.
We actually have a three-item agenda coming up for the last meeting in June. We'll have an architectural review of the new Popeyes Restaurant, which is located over off of Eden Road or Glen Road, I get those mixed up. We're going to have a waiver on a parking setback. This is up on an office building on City West Parkway. Because of the road improvement to Shady Oak Road and City West Parkway, we need some additional right-of-way. And so since they're losing some parking, we're allowing them to put some parking in another location on the property. I think that's pretty reasonable. The last one is going to be a residential subdivision called Reader Ridge, which is off of Eden Prairie Road. There's multiple property owners involved. I forget the exact acreage and exact number of units, probably in the profile. But it is a standard residential, single-family development and consistent with our comprehensive guideline.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Any members' reports at all? No light rail updates from anybody?
I do.
Okay.
Did you guys even, I brought some drawings with. Did you guys want to see them? It's technical issues, different crossing points in Eden Prairie, if you guys are interested.
Sure.
All right. All right. So we talked about, in the meeting, they kind of did about three or four technical issues for each city, where that's kind of what we're doing right now with the different meetings. So you can see, this is over in Golden Triangle. So the question that's coming up with a lot of these stations and with the track work is, do we do at-grade crossings? Do we do bridges? Do we do tunnels? What's the most cost-effective, best way to get through these areas? So this is Nine Mile Creek. Over by Golden Triangle, you'll see, this is Flying Cloud Drive coming through here. This is 212 over here. So the first option is, do we do an at-grade crossing right at the creek? And you can see there'd be a small bridge just to the west, kind of over by Department 56. Or the other option is, if we flip it over here, you'll see a much longer bridge that traverses that whole location, total grade-separated crossing over Flying Cloud Drive. Couple other things then. This is all Golden Triangle. So you'll see 212 again, Flying Cloud Drive, and then here by the actual station, how much park-and-ride do we do? They're thinking the demand in 2030 would be 290 to 360 spaces. So here's the city. Is this right, Mr. Franson? The city is actually planning on continuing this road through here that currently does not traverse through that space. Or here's another potential design, little smaller park-and-ride, same thing with the street coming through. And then there's a potential redevelopment in that space as, you know, would be brought on, I think, as part of the project. And would there be just a little different design? So they're really looking at, how much does the project do with park-and-ride? What does the actual layout look like for the... What does the actual layout look like for the roadway? And then, the next one we talked about was with that Shady Oak, redoing that area, going over two twelve. You guys can see there's a large bridge potentially going over that. And here's a visualization of that. You could see very similar, everything that they've talked about with bridge work for this project would be box girder bridges, like you guys had maybe seen off of fifty-five down by the airport.
So are they leaning more towards bridges for that particular one, or, because I know they talked about tunnel as well?
Yeah, you know, I, it seems like that is the potential way they're gonna go. One gentleman with another city, you know, he was asking for the total numbers. There's a lot of bridge work as part of the whole project. So I think they're gonna really start looking at cost more, and then there's gonna be more open houses at the cities. I want to say, is it towards the end of June, I think?
I think it's Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so we'll be, they'll be coming back to the city.
Did they talk, I'm assuming that it costs more to tunnel than it does to bridge, is that...
I believe so. No one, I, I should have asked this question, no one actually did. Like, what's the, the unit cost, you know, kind of like per linear foot of a tunnel versus a bridge?
I, I think also, when I, at least when I came to the meeting here in City Hall and looked at some of these locations, at least in one or two of the locations, they were talking about water tables.
Yeah, I'm sure.
An issue with tunnels.
And that, that's the big question over by Technology Drive, going right in front of that beautiful new memorial, you know, that we have with that park. I feel it's a really ugly, you know, addition to the area, to have a huge bridge. So, you know, I asked the question, you know, why don't we just take on that tunnel? And it would be a bigger question for the city of constant maintenance, of having to pump water. You know, similar to how New York City's constantly pumping water out of their subways. So that would be, I think, part of the city's decision of long-term maintenance. So I did ask the question, what about looking at different bridge types, especially for that location? Can we do something more beautiful? You know, maybe not nearly as large, you know, maybe have a little more elegant, you know, see-through look to it, instead of this large box.
It did raise, at least in my mind, though, just a quick comment, the issue of the visual impact of some of the development and how that's being thought about. Because, okay, there are water tables, and it makes it more difficult to do a tunnel in a location, but then if you have a fairly negative visual impact, where do you net out? And I'm just bringing it up because I don't know how that's being thought about. If it's an either-or situation, then you end up with a fairly negative visual con, concept or, or appearance in some places, potentially.
Well, I can tell you that every Friday, from ten until noon, there's various city departments that go down to the project office to talk about these technical issues. We've been doing this for better part of a year. And we're always going through variations on themes. And in terms of the big picture things that the project office, the city is concerned about, one is, there's a certain time that the train has to travel from Eden Prairie to downtown, to make it cost-effective, and be able to get the funding from the federal government to do construction. City's very concerned about traffic impacts at intersections. So that's one of the reasons we look at bridge crossings, so that we don't have delays at some of our critical intersections. The other thing we look at is environmental issues, and that was one of the issues where it's crossing Flying Cloud Drive. How do you deal with the creek crossing and the wetland? Does it go over part of the wetland? Does it go onto private property and have a property taking? So you got some cost considerations both ways. And then there's just the total cost of doing everything. Sometimes the tunnel is a less expensive option, and sometimes the bridge is a more expensive option.
Depending on the length of the bridge and the length of the tunnel, I guess.
Length of the bridge, the type of the tunnel, and the length of time that you might have to have a road shut down to be able to do the work, the construction cost for doing that. So there, you can't just look at something in isolation. You've got to keep the big picture in mind. And so we keep moving closer towards something that we're comfortable with as a staff. And when we get that together, we bring that in front of the city council in here, and say, here's what we think works from a technical perspective, how it impacts our roads, intersections, and the environment. Then the council commission have to look at the number of stations, the aesthetics of where the bridges are, where the bridges aren't, and what impacts you see to businesses and roads and intersections.
Who has jurisdiction over this entire project?
The Met Council has the final say in the matter. They hope to get what's called municipal consent, where the city council passes a resolution that's approving where the alignment goes in the stations and the parking areas.
And, and if they don't...
And if we say no to municipal consent, there actually is an administrative process, where they kind of appoint a board to kind of look at the issue, for the board to reach a conclusion. And if they can't reach a conclusion, then you still, the Met Council has the final say in the matter. But I would say, based upon how the project office, the Met councils work with us, I think they've been very flexible in approach. They've been very responsive to coming up with, if we have a question, say, well, what if we move the road here, or move the bridge here? What would that do? What might that cost? How do you feel about that? So all the different variations, they've been very responsive to at this point.
Good, that's great. As far as funding goes, do they have enough funding to take us through next year? And then they have to, okay. But they're not done yet with the funding, obviously. Great, okay.
But isn't, isn't it true that, that eventually, final completion is contingent upon a fairly large federal contribution, right?
Yes, it is.
And so depending upon the financial situation at the federal level, and the priorities of, at that level and so on, is there a moderate amount of risk that the, that the project would not be fully funded, even though a fair amount of money had been spent on the front end?
I'm not much concerned about that. If we are able to deliver the product on time and at the estimated cost, then I think we're fine.
Good question. Yes, ma'am.
I have one question for Mr. Franson. In the deliberations on the staff level for the technical issues involved, it's come to mind that people in the area over by the children's summer camp that's used by Friendship Village now, that area had a wetland that was actually, I guess, a lake. And it is pretty well dried up, and I understood, without any official sense of it, that what happened to that area in terms of its water table or whatever, and that, whatever happened to, to dry that up, is point, people point to the expansion or the building of Highway sixty-two out that way. And I guess my question then follows from that, which it may not logically, but in my mind, it's still there. Namely, if a tunnel were to be looked into, has anybody pointed to whether or not there would be, you know, I've heard about the pumping that might be involved. But what about the wetland itself and that whole Purgatory Creek, you know, water area that is such a feature of that part of downtown? Has anybody thought about that?
They will have to look at the way that water moves horizontally underground.
Right.
Because you have water that goes into the wetland that direction. You have water that goes into the wetland just from rainwater, from above, and stuff that goes from the storm sewer system. And it functions based upon a certain quantity of water going in to maintain the quality of the water there. So they do have a complete environmental division as part of the consulting team with the project office that is looking at those particular issues. So if they look at the tunnel and they identify that we're gonna have a problem maintaining the water flow going into the wetland, they would identify that for us as an issue. That hasn't come up yet.
Okay.
One other quick comment. It's a bit of an aside, but just for everybody to be aware of is, I thought it was kind of interesting that at least some folks were bringing up the issue that LRT could represent a competitor for Southwest Metro. And it's just an interesting issue. I'm sure over time, that'll be resolved, but...
Well, there's two different ways to look at it. The express service that Southwest Metro has is phenomenal. So if you want to get downtown to work and get home from work, and that's the only way that you travel back and forth, that's the right way to go. If you're on the light rail, and you're making intermittent stops, and you happen to work really late one night, miss the bus, you can get on the light rail, because they're running every ten or fifteen minutes. And so if you want to stop at a destination in between, and that's the way you just are, your business is and how you shop, it's an advantage for that type of person. So I don't see them as competing, because they're providing a little bit different service.
Okay. Good conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Franson, can I put you on the spot? Does the city have...
On the spot, all the time.
Does the city have a preferred station location and town center between the three that are being looked at?
Not at this point.
Okay.
He'll tell you off-camera, though.
Basically, we're looking at the, what was the locally preferred alternative, you know, up on Technology Drive. And then the other two that are still in consideration are up on that hill. I think it was about three hundred feet of grade, something like that, very large retaining wall, behind, like the Brunswick Zone. And then the other one that's very front and center, you know, on Single Tree Lane. So those are the three that are still being looked at. The one even further down, by like Presbyterian Homes, the, I guess the technical issues were just too great for them, for that one to still be included. So we're down to three, is where it's at right now.
So Katie, what's your opinion on it?
My opinion is Eden Prairie is in a position of looking at the next thirty to fifty years. This is an opportunity that I don't think we need to look at lightly. And we have some fantastic businesses in, in that central area, but I think LRT needs to be included in that decision. So I do think Single Tree Lane is the best option. And I, I know there's plenty of people who are affected, you know, so, but we need to work with them, instead of, I think, saying this, or one thing, or the other. We need to work together as a group. Like, I know there's been a lot of conversation about hide-and-ride. I don't know if you guys have ever heard that term, like with Walmart? I heard it for the first time, you know, I think the meeting in Eden Prairie. And instead of saying, this is gonna happen, you know, I think maybe it could be an opportunity, you know, maybe Walmart could make some money, someone in that area. You know, if we build a parking structure, provide it as a service. And then later on, you know, as decisions get made, it could be changed. But I think it's an important part of Eden Prairie.
Okay. Thanks for your feedback. I appreciate it. Well done.
Yeah, and that just, I, I won't say, I won't say this again, but I've said, I've just said it a couple of times. That, to me, reinforces the importance of there being clarity around some criteria for location that emanate from the city and represent the interests of the city. And those may be apparent already. I, I hadn't quite seen those, but it's very easy to get into a discussion at the detail level without having the conceptual clarity that allows you to say, wow, in a forty to fifty-year timeframe, or thirty to fifty-year timeframe, these criteria are the right ones for the city of Eden Prairie.
Yeah.
And I haven't quite seen that. I'm certainly, I'm relatively new at this, but that, that's bothered me just a little bit.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any other members' reports tonight? Okay, continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.